Tonight is the December 10th, 2012 meeting of the Planning Commission. I'll call this meeting to order and the first thing we will do is look at our minutes of November 26th, 2012. Does anybody have anything to add, subtract, or change to these minutes?
No.
Okay, so let's have a motion then.
I move to approve the minutes of this...
November 26th.
November 26th.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, minutes passed, four to zero. I have no announcements, does anybody else?
Just a reminder that the next town plan hearing for the select board is going to be on Thursday, this Thursday, 5:30. They're going to be doing Historic and Scenic Resources, Natural Resources, and Municipal Facilities and Services. And they warned those three chapters as well, so...
Exciting.
Looks like land use will be in January.
Yes.
Should be pretty likely.
Any other attendees for this meeting other than the Planning Commission was, you know, from other, maybe DRB maybe?
The Conservation Commission is aware that it's going on. One member had come to an earlier public hearing, so I'll send out a reminder hopefully, they might show.
As many of us as can get there would be good, so if you guys can make it, please come.
And then the only other announcement is, we don't have a schedule out for 2013 meetings yet, but the next meeting will be January 14th. So it'll continue to be the second and fourth Mondays, but we'll get you a schedule.
Is it safe to assume that Thursday's meeting is right here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And any members of the public who are interested to support your Planning Commission should also come. There is no public here tonight unless our camera person desires to make public comment.
You were approaching the microphone.
Wouldn't be completely unprecedented. So we'll move right across our training methods, to training methods of preserving overspace... oh, gosh, I can't even talk today. Open space in a conservation subdivision.
Okay.
Rob Su?
Yeah, so this is the little training portion. At the last meeting, we were going to talk about different methods for preserving open space that we didn't get a chance to. So for the November meeting, you would have gotten this frequently asked questions. You may or may not have it with you. But basically, there are kind of four, three or four ways that you can preserve open space once it's set aside. So the first is an individual landowner can retain the property. So an example might be a farmer has some really productive farmland but needs to make some money. He does, you know, a subdivision, sets aside the open space, and he's going to, he or she's going to keep that to farm. The rest is turned over. So that would be an individual ownership option. The second would be a homeowners association, so anybody who buys within that development would have, you know, as an ownership stake in that open space. We'll talk a little bit about homeowners associations coming up because it actually has to be formed and there's some other things that go along with that. The other is kind of a third party, either a land trust or a municipality. So land trusts are groups whose principal purpose is to protect land under its stewardship from inappropriate change. So really common around here is the Vermont Land Trust. They have easements on a lot of agricultural and forestry land in Brattleboro and throughout the state. Nature Conservancy also often holds easements on conservation land. Black Mountain in Deereston, they have some land ownership there. I can't recall off the top of my head if they own any land in Brattleboro. There might be a parcel or two. I don't know, do you know if Earthbridge Land Trust, I think that they may also be a land trust that...
What's the question, sorry? They do own that?
Do, yeah, if they are the whole land, conservation land?
Yes.
Yeah.
Part of the BEAC property is conservation. And then so also there's some of the land in Westminster.
Yep. Okay. So those are some players that are active in the region now. One thing that I would say about, at least that I've heard about, the Vermont Land Trust is, so when we talk about open space, we might talk about recreational land. Their focus is mostly on productive working lands, so agricultural lands, forestry. I don't think they're interested so much, I can't speak for them, but I don't think they're interested in the little. Like, I did a subdivision and I've got this nice land over here, and for them, it needs to fit within a bigger mission. And all of them are probably the same as well. And then, as I mentioned, the municipality could be kind of a party that could own or have, you know, interest in a conservation easement on conservation lands. There are actual instances, I think there might be a handful where the town does have a conservation easement. And if you recall, the residential development that went before the Planning Commission and then the DRB off of Western Avenue, Jonathan Chases, he was proposing that the town might be interested in that land. And, you know, the benefit to the town would have been it abuts the Luby Memorial Park. So if the municipality is going to hold an interest in easement on the land, then it's probably going to be because we have an interest. So those are the ownership possibilities for conservation land. And then the methods of actually conserving the land is, the most effective one is a conservation easement. And so that runs with the chain of title on the property, and it's separate from zoning. And so it's, the easement is usually held by a land trust or the town or, I guess, the state. I'm not really sure if they get involved in any of that. I don't think they do.
I don't think the state does.
And so that, you know, passes from owner to owner. And the benefit of an easement is that if you want to change it, it takes the two parties to agree. So whoever's holding the easement as well as the property owners, it's a little bit more difficult to change. And then the other option is a deed restriction or a covenant. And these are generally more useful if it's a small area, so I mentioned something that maybe the land trusts or any of those other organizations might not be interested in holding an easement on. You could go with a deed restriction, and that's put in the deed of the property. And it would limit how the open space is used and the structures that would be allowed and how the land should be maintained in perpetuity. And it almost always requires a homeowners association. And then if there's going to be a deed restriction, it's most effective when the town or DRB gets to review the language that's being proposed.
I'd point out that covenants are frequently used to ensure access. So sometimes there are landlocked, larger parcels that a land trust or something may be interested in holding. But to gain ready public access to that parcel, if that's the desired purpose of the open space, you can use covenants to actually also secure, you know, easements over or of a wholly owned private land that's not subject necessarily to the same restrictions. So it's just another, sometimes it comes in conjunction with a bigger project, I guess.
I don't know how many homeowners associations there are in Brattleboro and how effective they are. It's one of those things that are effective in managing open space, let's put it that way. I think that a lot of times the maintenance of it kind of falls through the cracks. So that's kind of a...
Yeah. I don't know how many there are. There's several.
And so an important part of open space conservation is to make sure that there's a long-term monitoring and stewardship plan. So if you were to, if the land trust, if a land trust was to hold an easement, they're generally going to charge a fee because they'll monitor and they'll check that out. I'm not sure if the town does that as well. I don't think that they do. But if you want to make the most of the open space and make sure it's being managed the way it's supposed to, you should have a management plan and then some method to monitor it. So that's the quick version of how you can conserve land. If there's any questions?
Now, when they have the select board meeting, that's going to be basically brought up during the meeting too about the subdivisions? That's another issue that they're looking at?
Not on Thursday.
Not on Thursday night, yeah. That'll be, the land use chapter will be discussed sometime in January, the day it is yet to be set.
This is something we're going to try to incorporate with the next project we do, which is rewriting the subdivision ordinances. And we're going to try to incorporate subdivisions that are fair to large property owners when they chop up their property.
Right.
So they can make some money but also preserve the open space so you don't get like a suburban-style layout, you know, like in Long Island, they chopped up at the potato farms and now it's just...
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Yeah, so this isn't necessarily pertinent to the hearings before the select board. We just decided to move forward with another project while we're going through that. And so what I would say about open space and having open spaces is you'll see it again when we do planned unit development in the zoning regulations, so it's...
Well, gee, since we've only got Timberley for a little while, if there's no questions, why don't we just power right ahead? Or did you have more? I mean...
Well, we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, how to determine what is appropriate for open space and kind of what percentages.
I'm sorry.
So we can, that's okay, we can either do that or come back to that.
No, let's do it. I didn't mean to cut you off, I just thought you were done.
Yeah. So when you're planning for open space, the next part is how much are you going to require for open space and what is the quality of the open space? And so I printed out this kind of document, if you look under, this is kind of an older document, but... I think it's to address some of the issues of how much and what is the land like. This is an older document about open space subdivisions. It's from the early 2000s, from the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission out of Massachusetts. But I thought it did a decent job of kind of getting at some of the issues, especially with the quality of the land. So the four questions are, how much should there be? Which land should remain as undeveloped open space? What should the allowable uses of open space be? And who or what will manage it? I think that the who or what has always been left open to whatever the applicant wants to propose here in Brattleboro, so...
Is there any regulation on that? I mean, is there, are there, you were just talking about the different types of ownership models. What, do we have requirements that if somebody's going to subdivide, that they have some kind of agreement?
We do have a requirement that there be somebody who's managing it, but it doesn't specify who it has to be. It can be a homeowners association, it can be a conservation easement held by somebody.
Right. So what I'd say is that the legal documentation of the entity that owns and manages is of interest to the, both the town in the process of permitting a subdivision that includes open space that's going to have shared use and/or management and ownership. So, you know, whether it's a land trust or homeowners association or is it, I mean, they just, I think the proper way to say this is that the town, of course, would use its attorney to review any of the draft documents. And it goes to questions of, you know, the legal structure of the entity that's proposing control or management and ownership. So it doesn't matter if it's a cooperative, it doesn't matter if it's a land trust, it doesn't matter if it is even, or a homeowners association. So just as long as the roles and responsibilities of the parties are clear. And I think there's enough familiarity with working with each one of those entities that I don't think there's a preference or anything, it's just, they're just accepted as ways of achieving that.
Do you work with them, or the town attorney, or who?
The lot, you know, we've not had a project, I don't think, that's involved Vermont Land Trust. The land trust does have easements and does control property, substantial property in Brattleboro. But yeah, it would be, you know, a group of us, it would be representatives of the land trust and the town attorney. And ultimately, you know, the documentation that would support this would be something that the DRB would also review. And in Western Massachusetts, for instance, or Massachusetts as a whole, but private land trusts that have got a philanthropic base or something are common and highly effective. And often what they'll do is utilize a tool where they will blend municipal resources with private resources to establish easements over, conservation easements over farmland or other, you know, open space. We don't have, I don't believe we have more than one land trust. I think it's just the Vermont Land Trust that's active here. But if you're in Western Mass, you'll see Kestrel Land Trust, you'll see a bunch of different entities that are active.
So in terms of the amount of open space that should be required, most within, you know, if you're following the conservation principles, they generally recommend that it be between 35% and 70% of the total tract, so the gross acreage of the property.
Do you guys lean one way or another on that question?
My gut says 35 is low.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it should be 50 at least.
I would say this range represents, you know, past, you know, the experience of establishing I would say for our purposes, given what we're attempting to do, 50 or higher would be an acceptable range. The reason why I think, if we're in a different setting, if we're in a much more metropolitan kind of setting, you might accept 35% because it's still a good alternative to a traditional suburban subdivision. And land could be both expensive and, you know, a short supply. And you'd still get a benefit for the number of homes, you know, families that were part of the development. But I think we are attempting to preserve rural landscapes. And so the balance needs to be clearly in favor of working more natural landscapes.
And if it could be less than 50, I mean, then I think you might want to look at it on a district...
Yeah.
You know, level, like, so maybe the residential could be on that lower end or something like that. But I think definitely for the rural and the rural residential area.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody was going to propose something, you know, sort of on the fringe or contiguous with the built-up area, say in the old Guilford Street area or something, you know, near Joe Familari's development, but more, you know, closer to the more settled neighborhood, I could, you know, I could see that working partly because, you know, of the context. But I think for a rural residential as a whole, the balance should be in favor of the open space.
So then there's the question of, well, is that land developable or not developable, or unbuildable? So when we get to the subdivision regulations, we'll see that we've basically said there's certain features of a property that cannot be developed. So it's the stream buffers, it's slopes over a certain percentage, it's the wetlands, it's this and that. That's kind of all undevelopable land. The idea, it's good to specify that all of your open space cannot be that undevelopable, for lack of a better term, junk land? I mean, it's not junk because it's got value, but because the point here is to kind of create these open space networks. So you might want to specify that some, it can't all be that land. If 50% of your site is undevelopable, you know, are you happy with that? Is that okay? Or do you want some of it to be usable, open space? So that's kind of the next question.
When we get into that, is there any kind of variance that you envision being possibly applicable to land that's just unusual?
Unusual in what sense?
Say in the sense that it's a medium-sized parcel where the whole thing is on land that's coincidentally above the grade for the ordinance to consider it, quote, junk land. But they happen to be able to build on the hillside, I don't know.
No...
A bunch of people want their houses on stilts and they can look out and have a view, you know, but it would be considered impossible under this.
Right. I guess sometimes when a developer comes forward and says that they want to, you know, have a piece of land counted as open space and therefore get a density bonus or something, you look at the quality of the land and establish whether it is basically of such a complicated shape or there are some other attribute to it, sort of like a ravine or a former stump dump or, you know, some other kind of feature of the land that just makes it really unsuitable for construction and difficult to access. So they'll say, oh, look, open space, and you look at it and go, not really.
I understand the problem. I'm just thinking that sometimes that land is in part of a scenic view and it happens to have a higher value. I can't really articulate the exact things I'm thinking. I'm just wondering if variances exist generally?
Well, I think if we're using the conservation subdivision tools correctly or the environmental assessments sort of standards and the subdivision regulations correctly, there's two sides to the stunning view question. So, okay, it could be difficult to develop or difficult to build on land, which I think is what you're getting at. But it could afford access to really stunning views, so it has value if it can be developed. But there's also the flip side...
Or value not to develop, I mean?
Right. There's the flip side, which is that it may mean that those houses or whatever those structures are visible from a large, you know, from a huge area and therefore constitute a form of visual blight on the ridge line or something. So I get where you're getting at. I think that the key thing here is just to try to ensure by applying standards consistently that when a developer offers land to be treated as open space, that that land has some value in and of itself, that it's just not, it's not merely the leftover piece of land that cannot practically be developed. And I think that's what we're trying to ward off here.
Oh, yeah. I understand.
Right.
My thought is that we're having, we're going to have trouble getting through the select board if there's a risk that this will devalue land that is currently subdividable.
You got mail, yes.
And maybe it won't. Maybe it won't.
Well, yeah, and there's even a, there's a particular ethic. So say the land is damaged in some way. So say, say that for whatever reason, you know, times past, the land in question has been really brutally abused through agriculture or some previous practice, and it's just sort of rock out crops and there's no topsoil and the bushes, you know, that's just scrubby bushes and no attractive trees or anything like that. Part of the land is, say five acres of your 20 acres looks like that. And then 15 acres that's upslope from that is pristine and really very high-quality, unscathed land, right? So it's a pretty extreme example. Most people would want to go and settle and develop the unscathed, really beautiful natural land. Some people would have an ethic that says what they should do is rehabilitate the abused land to ensure that the unscathed land remains that way. All right? So it's one of those things where if the developer came forward and said, oh, I just want this little path or trail or driveway or whatever is into this beautiful, unscathed natural area, and then I'm going to plonk six houses in there, and, you know, the response to the Planning Commission or the DRB could be, well, hang on a minute, actually, we'd prefer it if you put those out there in the scrubby junk land and rehabilitate the land and then keep the really pristine stuff as open space.
Can we do that?
Yeah, because you would have those tools that said, you know, you're proposing open space, it has little value in and of itself, other than that it's just, hasn't got buildings on it. But the land that you're proposing to develop actually does have really high natural asset. And so, you know, you could even come up with a scoring system and make it, you know, articulate the view that you would prefer redevelopment of the damaged land. It doesn't come up here that commonly. I mean, you know, I'm drawing a really stark example, but there are plenty of examples where that actually does turn up. And there are ways in which, you know, quarrying and, there's a whole bunch of land uses that actually do do extremely long-term damage to the way land works.
I mean, logging could too.
Logging can too.
Done not well.
Yeah, if you look at, on page 20 and 8 of that handout, it talks about disturbed areas.
Right.
So it's not just the impervious areas, it's areas that have been altered from its natural state.
Right.
Disturbed rather than impervious, yeah.
Right.
What I'm thinking is the inversion of your parcel, one that has a large proportion of bad...
Disturbed land, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Maybe not disturbed, but maybe a wetland or maybe a steep area.
Undevelopable.
Right.
That if we designed a metric that said you need a certain percentage of open space... let's see if I can word this correctly. You know, they might not be able to require it just because there was not enough pristine land at all, but it might be worth developing if they could say, we're going to rehabilitate So the percentage of bad land would be so high that regulations saying you can't have more than 50% bad land could never apply to the parcel. I guess maybe you could rehabilitate it in there.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, hypothetically, that's conceivable. I think, I think what you'd end up with in that situation is they would be contemplating doing something to rehabilitate at least some of the, you know, disturbed or damaged land in that sense.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little...
No, it's okay.
Theoretical here.
No, it's all right, it's good.
Do you have an example of a scoring system that people would use? Or is this sort of this one, two, one through six, is that...
Um...
No, that's...
No, it's not a scoring system.
I haven't seen a scoring system.
No.
What I have seen is, so say the requirement for open space is 50%. It will further break it down, something like, if the undevelopable land, you know, is 50%, then you need to do another 20% or, of that 50%, you know, 30% of it can be undevelopable and then 20% has to be, you know, of certain quality. undevelopable and then 20% has to be, you know, a certain quality.
So when they.
Some sort of breakout like that.
When they divide up the land, if you have a big chunk of land, you divide it up, part of it is conservation land. Within somebody's three acres, they may not develop their entire parcel. I mean, they may keep a lot of it wooded, so how does that come into play?
Well, the open space would be, I mean, if we're talking about a cluster subdivision, you would, you would group the homes together and you would make the parcels, you know, around those homes. If you had a further restriction, saying you each got a three-acre parcel and one acre that had to stay wooded or something for reasons of privacy or something, then that would be a further control or requirement of the, you know, placed upon the homeowners by their own homeowner association or whatever it was. But really, the open space would be, the way we're talking about, or at least in this theoretical model, is land outside the.
The building sites.
The building sites that are owned by a single entity. So it's almost worth sort of drawing on the board, but if you imagine, actually, I think if you go back to the handout from last time, if you look at the page, the diagram on page nine, you see, you see each of the, there's two cul-de-sacs basically off the road and, you know, one cul-de-sac is made up of five home sites, then there's two on the corner and then there's a further one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight around the other cul-de-sac further to the bottom. Each, it implies that each of those parcels is controlled by the homeowner and they share responsibility and care for the open space that surrounds it. And you also see that they're also attending to some other needs here, so it indicates, for instance, the potential greenway car or, so there's, they've broken out the open space and given it different uses and they're working with different entities to bring that about. So that would be, I mean, as an example, I think that's a good one, and I've seen that happen in Massachusetts where they've been very careful to figure out the distinct uses applying to open spaces and manages which part in which way. And you could conceive of something like this working here also for the same reasons, you know, a trail or something in the greenway corridor, a local entity helping support that, and then the homeowners themselves having a more, if you like, a more private open space arrangement closer to their own homes. The only other example, actually, and we can move on, I don't want to forget that there's an example of how to deal with, if you like, managing the various infrastructure that comes with residential development on page 10 that's worth pointing out later on, actually. So, well, we can do it now. So for instance, if you look at the alternate model on page 10, it's a smaller subdivision. And here what they're doing is they're using the open space basically as leach field territory, which allows each of the parcels to be smaller than they otherwise would. So in a typical subdivision setting in Vermont now, each one of these homes would have to have a big enough parcel to accommodate a well, a wellhead protection area, a septic system area for the, for the functioning septic system, a replacement septic system area.
Oh, wow.
And whatever else they're going to do in the yard. So you wouldn't have driveways or vehicles crossing the leach field or the pipe from the septic tank to the leach field, so.
You need more land in order to do that.
You do, you need about, in fact.
On your lot size needs to.
You need, you need about three acres under those conditions. Whereas each way, it's pretty clear that each one of these parcels, well, we don't really know the size, but you can shrink the parcel down pretty tight. You could probably get it under a quarter of an acre. And then each one of them has their leach field placed in the open space, which could be just, you know, relatively open flat land grazed by sheep or something, you know, in a sort of a semi-rural setting, it could be fine, you know, or a hayfield, which would also work fine.
Is there a way, I mean, I don't know if the state allows it to do some kind of combined kind of, the way a lot of communities like have a.
Yep.
Combined heating, community heat. Can you combine kind of.
Yes.
You can have a.
Gray water and then septic.
A combined system can often be more complex to permit and more expensive to construct, so.
But it can be done.
But it can be, so this is actually suggested as an alternative to the community septic system.
Yeah.
So by just using the common space as a way of.
Correct.
There's some advantages to this to the extent that each homeowner is basically responsible for their own system and it makes, it's probably, under the right circumstances, this is probably cheaper to build and cheaper to maintain.
They explained there, sometimes the HOA would be authorized to pump and whatnot, you know.
Yes.
It has to be specified out.
Yep.
So that those can be maintained.
Right. Well, if you had, if you lived in a really good jurisdiction, the municipality would be requiring you to show that you've had a pump down, but that's not here.
So, well, I mean, Rod's point is that, you know, what are kind of the uses that you want to allow in open space? And we don't expect that you can do that tonight because you just introduced to this. But, you know, are we going to allow septic systems, community septic systems, stormwater facilities, because you could be managing stormwater off of that way as well? And would you want to prohibit in open spaces? Are you going to prohibit roads and parking areas, maybe just the impervious ones? I, you know, I don't know. So those are also questions that will need to be addressed.
Right.
You know, what types of recreation? Is it just walking trails or, you know?
No pull.
Huh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just townwide?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's still.
I don't know. I mean, what was interesting to me about this was that, and maybe you've talked about this earlier, but conservation subdivision is different than cluster.
Yes.
And I, that was kind of new to me and how they were really different and what kind of percentages of open space was required and reading this, my tendency would be to think that doing conservation subdivisions was better, I guess I would say, because you could still do cluster within that, it would seem, or is that not?
Yeah. No, I think that conservation subdivision is just an evolution of the cluster.
Of clustering, right.
It still forces you to cluster as a practical matter, right?
And it pays.
It just goes a step further.
It just, yeah, it pays more attention to the landscape.
Right. It puts more emphasis on what you're actually doing with the open space and why you're clustering in the first place.
Yeah.
I think people were somewhat, I mean, this article spells it out, oh, no, this document that's super circulated, so spells it out, that in the early, I mean, clustering's been around since the 1970s, so since before Sue was born. So.
Since born.
A long time ago.
Not bad, bad.
Maybe before James.
Yes. So, the, you know, in other words, we've had 40 years to sort of sit and think about how clustering's really working and not just here, but in other countries as well. And the experience in general is that done cynically or done cheaply, it's a way of getting some kind of a bonus, a density bonus, so you can build more with, you know, carefully identifying the junk land and saying, oh, open space or something like that. And so it's been somewhat cynically used. And so the reaction to that has been to sort of become more specific about the criteria that constitutes, you know, a good cluster design, what you're going to do with the open space, why are you going to have open space and so forth. And I would say conservation subdivisions are an evolution from that. And in, in our context, it's been really led by, you know, people like Randall Laurent and others who have focused their attention on rural settings for subdivisions. And in the context of this part of the country in particular, and, you know, even where I'm from, most subdivisions happen on the edge of a settlement and so they are eating into farmland or something similar very frequently. And so it's a way of sort of responding to that landscape more seriously, I guess is what I'd say, so.
Would it pay more, it would pay more attention to wildlife corridors too, I would think?
Yep. Yeah, it's because if you could.
Because we don't always tend to think of that, or developers don't, but I think that's.
Right.
Very important as more and more development happens.
Right.
I mean, just today, I mean, there was a red fox crossing over High Street, you know.
Right.
Right in front of my car. It's like, hmm, what you doing here?
Right. Yeah, there's someone mentioned that in Ibrov.
Yeah, I hear that, yeah.
So, so that's, yeah, and that's an example of actually doing the research, if you like, and figuring out what are the valuable attributes of that natural land and what is your response to that, rather than just saying, you know, the 25% that's furthest away from the road, you can have that as open space and not be at all interested in figuring out what's going on with that 25%. It could be an old quarry.
Yeah. Or again, like the drawing on the back page showing just a little bit different arrangement of the street and the houses, just really made it so that the subdivision itself really wasn't quite as visible from the main road.
Right.
And gave everybody, you know, just kept the landscape less disturbed, I guess you would say in a way.
Right.
But how do you get, how do you do that so you can get developers to do it like the picture on the right rather than the left? I mean, is there ways to, right, I mean, that's, I mean, that's nice. I mean, I can sit there and, or any of us can probably go, yeah, that's, that's great. Same amount of lots, I think, maybe minus one, I counted, I think it was almost the same. But it certainly gave all the people, for the most part, except for one small bunch, private backyard, you know, woods to the backyard, except for those few that boarded each other. You know, how do you, say somebody comes with a plot plant or whatever you call them that looks like the left and.
Well, I mean, I think you can only, you know, write the standards.
Has to be pretty general.
You know.
Right.
Yeah, general but specific, and then it's going to be up to the board to kind of push a little, to get something better if they don't think it's, it's good, so.
Right.
But if they don't, they don't, if they don't know the difference, I mean, if I weren't to have seen that other picture, I wouldn't have.
Thought that?
Yeah, I wouldn't have thought that. I would just say, oh, yeah, okay, so they're nicely spread out and, you know, everybody has a private backyard and, you know.
Yeah.
Blah, blah, blah. It connects, there's, it's not just one way in and one way out, you know.
Training.
Yeah.
You know, you know, it's like.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, especially around here because the development level is so low, so it's pretty far between these, you know, first of all, we don't get anything at that scale.
No.
But then, you know, the experience is low because the development is.
But if you can think back to maybe something even like, say, Carriage Hill when it was originally put out, how, you know, that, you know, I mean, I don't know, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can provide developers with good guidance and I think that, you know, mature deliberation by the D O B, you know, with, with good rules to go from.
A framework.
Can help.
So that's going to be.
Great, yeah, and then.
A little bit of what we incorporate in.
Right.
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Yes. And then ultimately, it does depend on some level on the imagination and the commitment of the developers.
Yeah.
That might be a good segue.
Yeah.
Into, I mean, obviously, we're going to.
It'll have to be a.
We're going to have to come back and revisit open space and, you know, throw some questions out to you.
That's good.
Some more time to think about it. But in the meantime, do you want to do the stuff?
Yeah, yeah. So let me just, not everyone who's here tonight was here at the last meeting. So what we did at the last meeting, Caroline, this might come as a bit of a shock to you, is decide not to have a specific section in the subdivision regulations that described a so-called conservation subdivision. It was determined that we would use the V L C T model language.
We need lots of reading.
Right. That we're just handing out to you now.
Obsolete. It says the same date on it.
Right.
You don't want to put December 7th on it.
Yeah, when you just handed out.
Yeah, sorry. This is background, you can't fall asleep.
This is homework for the holiday session.
Yeah. So back in late summer, the V L C T released a so-called Model Environmental Resource Area Protection Standards for Subdivisions. And this follows on some firm long work undertaken by Millie Archer from V L C T in conjunction with people from B N R C, Vermont National Natural Resource Council, and the Agency of Natural Resources. And so these are, these are, this is model language to be incorporated into subdivision regulations. And what it does is actually identify environmental resource area protection standards for those subdivisions. And it occurred to us that if you approach, if you approach the process of reviewing a subdivision application from the standpoint of developing kinds of, you know, specific criteria and then a checklist approach, that for any subdivision, minor or major, we would want the applicant to address the questions that, or the criteria that are contained in this model environmental resource area protection.
The second handout you gave us.
Yeah, the one that's got V L C T model subdivision standards in the bottom.
Yep.
Okay, from August 2012. And so we particularly thought that the five-step design process was very similar to what we were proposing for the conservation subdivision process before. And that even if it was a minor subdivision or a subdivision in a part of town where this was not necessarily applicable, then the answer would just be not applicable, but that we would want the applicant to address the criteria that's contained and, for the most part, contained in this. We actually might, what we want to discuss later on, actually strengthening some of this model language, because we feel like it could do with some, some improvements. But if you look at the bottom of page three, you'll see.
Yeah.
A five-step process. And so we figured that this worked fairly well for the process that we were laying out for subdivisions in general. Step one, identify the environmental resource areas. Step two, identify the potential development areas. Step three, identify building sites and envelopes within potential development areas. Four, lay out roads, driveways and utilities. And five, identify proposed lot boundaries. And then we, those are elements that we feel should be incorporated into any subdivision application, no matter how small.
And whether or not it's clustered.
And whether or not it's clustered, right? And so.
And are there more specifics for those when it says identify each of those things? Are there?
Yeah, it'll tell you what, what those are.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll walk through.
I was asking for criteria before.
So we felt that basically, given where the area, given where the land is that's available for further development in Brattleboro and given the type of subdivision, residential subdivision development that we hope to see, that using this, this moral language achieved our goals fairly easily there. And so we didn't feel the, the need, if you like, to persist with.
A separate section.
A separate section just addressing conservation subdivisions.
Because also, we have the planned unit development and the planned residential development and the, and those are what permit clustering and, you know.
Right.
Flexibility of the lot lines and that kind of thing. So the idea would be we can require a planned residential development for something in the rural and rural residential, and they would also be working with these standards.
Right.
So they would have to go through this process and then they also get the flexibility. So in a sense, having a conservation subdivision is a little bit redundant.
Yeah, right.
To what a planned residential development could be.
And so we're also trying to, in the interest of trying to make the document as streamlined as possible and short as possible and it's easy to. as possible, and short as possible, and as easy to follow as possible, wanted to break out, the P U D, P I D requirements, the planned unit development and planned residential development requirements are to do with ensuring that the different dimensional standards, so setbacks, for the most part, and the parcel boundaries, and the legal vehicles for joint ownership and control, like a homeowners association or something similar. That, that's the purpose of the P U D and P I D requirements, and the last part about that is density bonuses. So we wanted to keep that in one section of the subdivision regulations, and we wanted to keep the sort of more performance standards or criteria about the actual design in a different section. And we actually think that the design requirements of a subdivision need to be addressed, no matter what the ownership vehicle or the structure of the, the land development is going to be.
So whether it's just a developer, or a P I D, or a P U D, doesn't matter?
No.
So, are we thinking this might be the first dip of our toes into the pond of form-based?
No.
No.
Yeah.
No. No.
So what are you talking about that? Because I think I may have misunderstood you when you say the forms and the P U D.
Oh, just the, the planned unit development and the planned residential development, to remind everybody, or for those of you relatively new, in Brattleboro, we have, we use two terms, planned unit development and planned residential development. You can have a planned unit development, say, in an industrial district, or in a commercial district, or any district. Planned residential developments are very similar in intent, and they are only for residential and rural residential zoning districts, and they restrict the non-residential uses. So basically, a neighborhood store is possible in a planned residential development, but nothing much more than a neighborhood store, right? So, in other words, it's trying to preserve and protect the residential character. But really, they do the same kind of thing. So it's, it's a procedure, a set of procedures for the applicant to come forward and say, I don't want to be restricted by the regular dimensional requirements for this zoning district. I don't want to have regular shaped parcels, each with, you know, five-foot side fence setbacks, and, you know, whatever it is, 25-foot front setbacks, and so on and so forth. I want, I want more flexibility than that.
Are the affordable housing communities in West Brattleboro, P I Ds? I know Tri-Park's a P U D, right?
Tri-Park is.
Tri-Park's a P I D?
Sorry.
Tri-Park is a P U D. Westgate is a P I D.
Westgate is the one I was thinking of.
Yeah, Westgate's a P I D, pretty sure.
What's the development behind the Richards Building?
What about the Sursasmo thing above Westgate?
It's the development.
That's separate?
Wait.
That might be P I D, too.
Which one is Westgate? I get mixed up.
Westgate's the one on the court with the troopers on the corner.
With Chelsea Road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chelsea rolls over the road.
Is there a Richards Building there?
No, the Richards Building is on.
Which is building right in West Brattleboro, on the bridge.
You talked about Melrose there?
Before you go down to Hayes Court.
Yeah, Hayes Court.
Yeah, you go ways down on Westgate.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's past 7-Elevens.
Hayes Court's a P U D, I think.
Huh.
I was just wondering, because the Richards Building has served several purposes over the years.
Yes.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. And it's now.
Mixed use, now president.
It's in the village, and it's mixed use, and it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not, it's not part, although it's owned by the same entity, it's not part of the zoning district that is immediately behind it.
Oh, all right.
It's separate.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so what we're trying to do is encourage people to think of the P I D, P U D thing as both a development process, and then as sort of a way of organizing boundary lines and organizing the documentation that goes with a certain kind of a subdivision. We want people to think of the environmental resource area protection standards as something that's applicable to every subdivision. Does that make sense? Now, what we're trying to do is explore how to make sure that if we were to offer density bonuses for P U Ds or P I Ds, they would be meaningful, and people would want to take advantage of them. And so, in other words, encourage people to use those tools, those development tools. And in return for that, seek, you know, greater density than otherwise would be applicable. The reasoning behind that is that typically, the upfront cost of doing a P I D or a P U D is slightly higher than a so-called conventional subdivision. And so, it's a way of encouraging developers to utilize that tool, because it's felt like the outcome is usually high-quality, and it gives, you know, new residents more options and more choices in terms of the way they're going to live, and it's a more efficient use of the land. Oddly enough, in Vermont, because they don't really offer density bonuses for P U Ds or P I Ds, you very rarely see people utilizing that as a development tool, because they don't get the returns that they might otherwise, and I do.
Yeah. I don't think it's just density.
Right.
Bonus, but I think that doesn't help.
Right.
So a lot of those units that they have for Wyndham Housing Trust, Land Trust, and all those, are P U Ds or P I?
Depends.
They vary.
Some of them are just multifamily.
Some of them are just, yeah, most of Wyndham Windsor is just multifamily. It's not.
Like on Bird Street, that's a.
That's just multifamily.
Multifamily.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the one down over there by where the co-op is, that would be?
Mixtars.
Yeah.
Mix, you're the one, the apartments above the co-op, part of a mixed-use development, so it's just, yeah, multifamily. And then, same with that block over the road. So, yeah, most of the Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust are not, don't utilize those tools. They haven't done that much greenfield development.
No.
So it's much more something that's associated with new development. If you knocked it all down and started over, you might, I mean, I'm not suggesting it, but.
Yeah.
But if you were to do, if one, if somebody was to do that, then you might explore that as an option. But typically, you know, an already built-up area is, it doesn't, doesn't get that much use.
An example of a planned unit development is, and this was after the fact, obviously, is the S D buildings on Bird Street, so, like where E E S is, and the museum, and kind of that, that back building, I think, is part of the P U D as well.
Yep.
So say that was, you know, it would be hard to create that development under our existing zoning, so they became a planned unit development, so there's a little bit more flexibility. And, like, you can think of that site, okay, well, what if that, those buildings weren't there, which hope never happens, but you could probably most effectively develop that property.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
You would need flexibility to.
Right.
So, a planned unit development. And there are, there is some residential there, I think there's condos.
There's a lot, quite a few.
Right.
Yeah, there's a couple of condos in there, so.
Some on Westgate, too, for Land Trust, it's quite a lot.
So, so the real question here is, you know, so, we don't want to sort of get too geeky about it, but there's sort of a question about the structure of the document, and there's a question about why we're separating these two things out. Of course, we want to encourage an applicant who's going to use the P U D or the P I D process to cluster wherever appropriate, and preserve open space. But for the most part, what we want to do is separate out kind of environmental issues that we see on one level, and the sort of assessment that we want applicants to do of the parcel that it proposes into subdivide, and then the development tools that you might use, which could be P I D or P U D, or, you know, a regular subdivision, depending on the district, right?
Yeah, and just so you're aware, there's kind of two parts to the planned unit development, planned residential. There's part of it that lies within zoning, and then there's kind of the part that lies in subdivision. So, it's a little bit hard, because we're only talking about one side at this point. So we'll have to kind of reconcile that.
Right. I think for our purposes, it's important to, in terms of the way P I Ds and P U Ds are dealt with in the zoning ordinance, P U Ds are not possible in all zoning districts, is the simplest way of saying it, right?
Assuming the new town plan is passed.
No, even now.
Even now.
Really? Why can't you have a P U D?
In a residential district.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Excuse me, James, did you start the recorder?
I did.
Okay, thank you. I haven't been very good at taking minutes, so I was just like.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
So, so to go back to the Model Environmental Resource Area Protection Standards, it really is kind of an embodiment of the low-impact development, design strategies that are being encouraged to minimize stormwater management issues, and to work with natural systems as far as practical, and avoid, you know, large-scale or heavy, heavy engineering interventions in the land to achieve development. And in an effort to do that, it requires developers to follow that five-step process that I went through before. And then, basically, adhere to general standards that are mapped out on page five. You see A, B, C.
Mm-hmm.
C is broken out into three separate.
Yeah, they've kind of been tweaked a little, so I'm not sure it's worth.
Right.
It's kind of background, and I can kind of.
Right. And then, you go over the page, and you see specific stormwater management and erosion control standards, the low-impact development design, and then stormwater management and sediment and erosion control standards. Then there's a specific section addressing the management of water, avoiding erosion, and controlling sediment during, during the process of construction, which is a major.
Yeah.
Issue. And then, we didn't use their open space standards, so, and then the last section addresses, just has a set of definitions.
Yeah. It wasn't, what has been brought in from there is not, there, there has been some tweaking to it, so, this is just a draft. I was working up on it until four o'clock this afternoon, that's why you didn't get it ahead of time. So the idea was that we could walk through it and kind of sit with it.
How do these two things relate to each other? This, this articles of enactment authority and purpose, this related to the thing from the V L T C, V L C T?
So, yeah, so the V L C T document is, when you get to Article Three, that's kind of where it kind of comes in.
Oh, okay.
A little bit, not, not verbatim in, in places. So, it was just kind of, it formed the rethinking, you know, that we wanted to make sure that the environment was considered in all subdivisions, not just conservation.
So this is still a draft of the subdivision, right?
Yes.
With some other stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Aside from the other separate package, do you feel it's complete?
No.
No.
When I say complete, just it has all the general issues covered?
Yeah.
I'd say it has most of the general issues identified that we're, where, you know, we're working with. I'd say it just needs some fleshing out.
Yeah, and it needs some consideration of the implications of what, you know.
I like these pictures a lot.
Yeah, well, we want to try to put more pictures in.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Does it need a little introductory page or something that tells, like, twists, like an index that which each of the articles are?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, definitions need to be done. I mean, it's definitely, it's definitely drafted. It hasn't been vetted by Public Works or the Fire Department. We did speak to Public Works about, happy holidays, about, or see Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to, to propose it to them. We spoke a little bit about road standards, but.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, but this is the kind of thing that we'd be looking at. It's written to be kind of prescriptive, rather than, you know, it's fairly detailed.
What's the other word we keep hearing?
Prescriptive versus.
For the town plan?
Isn't that what we're using?
Well, that's the problem. It's supposed to be, uh.
Well, this is supposed to be, well.
This is supposed to be prescriptive.
I certainly agree. I'm trying to make a joke and.
Well.
Just ignore me. Continue.
We have seen other models that are a little bit more performance-based, that have actually used the conditional use standards, and then elaborated a little bit on what they were looking for. And it's interesting.
Right.
And intriguing.
You don't think we should do that?
It's interesting that you say, call it interesting.
No, I'm intrigued by it.
Yeah. You know, we're just curious about the setting in which those things come about, and how effective it is.
When you say performance-based, can you give us an example of how that would look?
Like, there might be a statement such as, you know, if we're evaluating the character of the area, so that's the conditional use criteria. So, you might have a couple of statements like, there'll be no undue adverse impact to wetlands. There'll be no, you know, there'll be no road congestion. And so then, it's up to the developer to kind of propose how they're going to do that and make the case that they.
Don't.
Don't have an impact.
Right. So, yeah, it's, to read the document, the municipality or, you know, the regulating body makes clear what their concerns are, for example, traffic conditions, and then puts the obligation on the applicant to prove that there's going to be no detrimental impact on, on traffic conditions in the, in the roads, you know, adjoining the subdivision.
Mm-hmm, right.
I guess the.
So rather than saying, you need to connect to the next property, or, you know, or that, you know, you have to, I'm just thinking, how loud do you want two, two means of access to the subdivision, or something like that? You know, they can propose however way they're going to meet that.
Right.
And is the, is the concern with the possibility of doing that uniform enforcement?
Not enforcement, for me, I think it's.
Not enforcement, I mean, acceptance of, by the D R B of applications. I mean, if you're, if you're putting it in the hands of the D R B, it's conceivable that you could have two similar applications, one four years after the other with a different board, and they would see the same issue differently, whereas with the rural.
Yes.
Yeah.
A little, I mean, that's part of it, I think.
Fifty percent, it's fifty percent.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not saying there's a reason not to do that, I'm asking, is that generally considered a negative there, or?
It's one of my concerns.
Right. It's hard, it's, when performance standards, it laid out the way we just described, and it's, there's more than one community, there's several communities in Vermont that have that style of, of document.
How do you avoid the JAM golf issue?
Well, I was just, I was just going to say, they all strike me as being pre, I mean, most of the stuff in Vermont is, but they, they, they strike me as being very difficult to encounter, you know, following the JAM golf decision.
Should we, for those of you that are new.
Yeah.
The JAM golf, do you want to speak about it?
First of all, we call it JAM, but that's only because it really irks everybody that's involved in it. It's, it's more correctly referred to as J A M, jam. And it was a now-famous case between a developer responsible for a golf course, you know, golf course development in South Burlington, with a residential aspect to the golf course development. So in other words, linkside residential homes, which is a certain kind of a market, as you can imagine. And that question went to.
Open space.
Open space, actually. And the developer had come forward to the, the D O B, the Planning Commission, and sought. Commission, and sought to have land that appeared on a map to be open space be used for further residential development, and said that in return, other land that remained undeveloped would be placed in open space designation. So in other words, they were wanting to do a land swap, right? What they showed as, as open space, they wanted to use for development, and what they showed as available for something else, they wanted to put in open space. And I don't remember the details of the board's rejection of their application, but they rejected it on the basis that, no, they really meant that that was the actual place where the open space was going to be, and claimed that it had natural attributes or something that meant that it needed to be protected as open space and shouldn't be developed for residential use. And the developer took South Burlington to the Superior Court and won, right?
Yes.
So...
No, it must have, it must have, they must have lost to the Superior Court, because it was, then went to the Supreme.
Supreme?
I think it did.
Neither side can appeal.
What's that?
I mean, they can win or lose, and if the other side appeals...
Right.
Doesn't matter what the Superior Court says.
Okay, yeah.
It's either affirmed or pressed.
But I think it eventually went to the Supreme.
I think it may have. So I'm not sure how far up...
The Vermont, not...
The Vermont Supreme Court. So, that's correct. It did go to the Vermont Supreme Court. So in this decision, the judges, the judge rendered a decision that made it very clear that what they were looking for, first of all, they upheld the appeal, and it was the developer that appealed it. So they allowed the developer to proceed. And so it was a bit of a slapdown, not just for South Burlington in this instance, but many communities that had similarly written subdivision regulations governing the use of open space and had given similar decisions in the past. And the reasoning of the judge was that it was, the language contained in the town plan of South Burlington and in the subdivision regulations was not adequately clear to give guidance to the applicant in this instance or to be able, you know, provide a meaningful decision about the impact on the open space through development or not. So the applicant's appeal was upheld.
It was very vague language, like, you can't make the place look worse.
Right.
You know, what does that mean? How are you supposed to... Their logic was like, if you have a law that says you can't make this look worse, well, what does that mean? You can't have red shutters on your house? You can't...
Find worse? What is your definition?
Yes, exactly.
It wasn't exactly like that, but that's the fundamental problem.
Yeah, it wasn't specific language, so how could you hold it, hold them to it?
Right. So it was...
I might think red shutters look like crap, and you might think they're beautiful.
Right.
So it was a requirement by the court, then, that municipalities write much clearer language that was either, that was very specific in terms of setting standards, preferably even quantifiable.
Couldn't say, wasn't that like, like, should look like or something, wasn't...
Yeah, should is not strong.
Should is not strong. Shall is, yeah. So it was, it goes to the ridiculous grammar problem of should versus shall.
No aspirational language.
Yes. And this relates to our town plan.
Right. And it relates to our town plan in this important way. You can't have aspirational, flowery language. You have to have very explicit language.
Let's not go down there.
So with, so with a performance-based subdivision kind of model, I mean, I think there are concerns about being specific. I also personally, I mean, we've heard members of the DRB say several times, we are not the town. And so I'm not sure, you know, if this is the town of Brattleboro's regulations, then I feel we should be clear as to what we want, because I'm not sure that the DRB is looking out for what we want. They're trying to be that impartial in the middle, so we should be clear.
Yeah, the current DRB holds to the doctrine that they are adjudicators, they are adjudicating on the basis of the application, and it either meets the, it either meets the guidance which is contained in the subdivision and zoning regulations or it doesn't. So, but they also don't feel like they've got any obligation to craft decisions that implement the less, you know, the aspirational language of the town plan or the town's wishes, however they may be articulated. So if you take that back to the process, then we need to be able to give clear guidance to the DRB. And in that instance, a set of performance standards where really you're placing the obligation on the applicant to satisfy, in this instance, it would be to satisfy the, it would be to the DRB satisfaction that you've resolved that issue, right? And so it's not much more specific than that. It's like, show us that there's no traffic impact. Well, on a good night, that might be, look, there's not much traffic. On a bad night, that might lead to a, you know, a much more rigorous cross-examination of what you're going to do.
Right.
Whereas if we said something like, using, you know, available traffic data, you know, or whatever it is, and estimate, you know, using an acceptable traffic engineering methodology, calculate the impact on traffic for surrounding streets, then the applicant has a very clear sense that, first of all, it's going to cost me some money. I have to hire a traffic engineer, even if it's for an afternoon. And secondly, I can give the traffic engineer a very clear set of instructions about what's required, and once I've done that, then I've satisfied that requirement, right?
I think the better way to deal with this performance-based is to not have it be the standard of these, but where we think that it may be appropriate, like I saw in the road section, we require a 50-foot right-of-way unless the DRB says otherwise. And I think that's a safer way to approach it than to say, everything is on the DRB to make a judgment on whether X does Y.
Okay.
So we have rules that are...
So in situations where we're willing to be?
We have defined rules so people can read this and say, okay, this is the rule. And that allows us to focus in areas where maybe having strict rules either might chill development or just might not be appropriate, then we can say unless the DRB says otherwise and give performance guidelines or not, where they might be able to override the statute for the ordinance.
The one thing I'd say there is...
I'm not saying we should do this every time.
Right. I think where we say something like, such as that, whereas the, so if you, so we're looking at road design, right? So you've got...
Page twelve.
Page twelve. Item number one, rights of ways, so it's probably just right-of-ways or rights of way.
It's not been edited.
For all roads, shall be a minimum of 50 feet in which the DRB has the discretion to waive this requirement if appropriate. What I would, what I would say there is, instead of the if-appropriate, I'd actually provide...
Situations.
Situations or criteria that inform both the applicant and the DRB as to how to process a request for waiving that specific requirement.
I agree entirely.
Yeah, because what's appropriate, that's vague also.
Yeah, I didn't mean this exact thing. I just mean the structure where it's, we say, this is the rule.
Yep.
But if we think that it's something where performance-based guidelines would help there be more development potential wrung out of the land parcel, then after the rule, it seems like, then you can have performance guidelines for a waiver, and it's not so squishy.
Yep. Right. And then similarly, in item number two, we say, the DRB may modify such standards in situations in which such modification is warranted to ensure pedestrian or vehicle safety, or when the strict application of the standards would adversely impact the scenic character and/or natural resources or features located on the site. So that, I think, gives enough guidance to the DRB and the applicant as to exactly how to proceed there. So I think that, that strikes me, and it...
It's more, yeah, it gives you the scenarios in which you can get out of that.
Right.
Although I think, wasn't scenic character the term in JAM-Golf? Or something very close to that?
It was.
I hate to say it, but...
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I mean...
Well, I think, I mean, this is, it hasn't been edited, and I actually do want to go back and find some of this scenic character and/or natural.
I totally agree with you. It's just worth noting.
No, what I've tried to do in those situations is go back and call it the environmental resource areas, because Section 3.3 actually lays out some of those things. So, I mean, that's the kind of editing and detail that is needed.
I mean, if we write a good ordinance that never gets to the Supreme Court, it doesn't have to be perfect.
No, just has to go there.
If people do it, we'll have done a good job. And if the unlikely possibility, the Supreme Court says this thing stinks, well, then we try to do it a different way.
Right. So, to go back to that term, actually, the problematic scenic character, I think if we go back, if we trace that back to the environmental resource area criteria, we can come up with a better term than that. And I think that we should be mindful of the J-A-M decision in the way we craft this language.
Well, another way, you know, I hate to word smith, as you know, but another way to get out of it would be to have a definitions section where you define scenic character and then...
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I didn't get around to all the definitions, so I...
Yeah, I realize this is a draft. I'm just sort of thinking as I'm thinking.
Okay. So, so in general terms, I think both so and I remain intrigued by the performance standard model, and I think absent a decision like J-A-M, we might be more open to it than we, than we are now. I would say, you know, we've not had a direct experience with a problematic appeal like that. I can, I can tell you that South Burlington still struggles with the, that sort of process. And they knew, you know, they knew from the point of the decision onwards that they were vulnerable and they had a problem there.
I can't imagine what it's like to try to write regulations for a place like South Burlington, which is such a mix of different needs.
It's kind of okay in some way. I mean, you know, I think there's a sort of a maturity, for the most part, there's a sort of a maturity around the development process that, you know, you can depend on a little bit. So, I mean, I think there's some good developers and so forth present.
I think this looks good, though.
Yeah.
I didn't expect to have this much, so thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I got the feel that like the first page was sort of from the old plan and the rest of it was new. Is that about right?
The first page as in...
The purpose and all the statutory.
Yeah. Yeah. We might want to spend a little bit of time on the purpose, or, you know, I definitely want to go back through that.
I'd like a chance, I'll do it myself if you want to, to try to diminish the, I hate to use this term, but the legalese kind of sound of a lot of this language, so it's a little more accessible.
It's been one of my concerns with it as well.
And that's part of the reason I like those illustrations. I noticed the further I got into it, the better it seemed.
Yeah. That first article, I, was the first one I wrote, and I was bothered by the legalese, and even in Article Two, when I worked on that.
Yeah.
Because it's a model that is, you know, a lot of towns are working with in Vermont, and so, you know, some of the language is, was taken from other towns, because that's...
Let's have them take it from us and make it a little less.
But I agree. I mean, I'd like your help.
And I'll do it, if you want. I love doing that. I don't like legalese.
Some of the things...
Go read it all freaking day.
At the last meeting, Liz had talked about pointing out where things are different, and really, it was a very futile, futile exercise. Everything is different when you get to the standards.
Right.
You know...
Well, I, I don't, I don't think we need that, and she's not here, so if none of us are upset about that.
I mean, I do have a comments version that I'm working on and where, you know, where we are modifying. For example, in the road standards, right now, we require a 60-foot, I didn't give you the notes version, because it's got some of my own notes as well, but the turning radius of a cul-de-sac, right now, we require a 60-foot radius, but we're recommending a 30-foot radius. We need to talk about that with the Fire Department. My understanding is that a 40-foot radius is going to get most emergency vehicles around most, not all. A 30-foot is going to basically require them to make one backup movement and get out.
Well, I mean, it's enough labor to be going over this whole thing repeatedly, and I don't think it's a good use of the staff's time to make something cataloging each of the changes, because it's clear to me that after about 2.1, it looks completely new, 2.2 maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks new.
And I haven't even read the old subdivision regs that much.
Right.
And the process, isn't that different? I mean, we got rid of the sketch plan, because that wasn't happening. You know, we added some other, codified it, codified that you could meet with the staff.
Well, I don't, unless anybody here disagrees with me, I think you should let that cataloging changes thing go by the wayside, and I think we should just concentrate on this being awesome, and applicants being able to use it, the DRB being able to judge applications with it, and the town feeling like it serves at the ends of the town.
So...
But you're still...
Do you want to just...
I, yeah, I mean, I still want to go through it.
Yeah, sure.
I just, I don't want to have to, I don't want for you guys to have to make a mark of every change.
That's good.
I think that's just too onerous.
Yeah, it's good.
We're the ones who are supposed to be reading this thing, and eventually, God willing, we will.
We got a lot for Christmas, all Christmas homework.
Can I ask a procedural question? If I wanted to make changes to this, say, and talk to you about it before the next meeting, can we do that without having to warn anything?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
It's just that three of us can't?
Yeah.
Yep.
Four of you can. That'd be a form.
Four of us can't at the same time?
Right.
So we can't have like group emails, but I can be emailing you and we can go over at the next meeting? Is that the way to do it?
Yep.
And that's the way any of us can if we have things?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. One of the things that we talk a lot about in here is establishing building envelopes. And then if you look on page 11, well, I don't think it's the best example, but I can't believe how difficult it is to find a drawing of a building envelope.
I thought that was great.
Yeah, it's, it's not bad, but where it goes maybe needs to be thought about a little bit. So a building envelope, basically, it shows the, where structures are going to be located on the property. It's not a requirement right now. In general, you know, it'll comply with the setbacks, so, you know, that's kind of the minimum areas, the setbacks. We could also include in that area kind of the limits of clearing and land disturbance, which I think is a good idea to do. I mean, clearly, it's going to be bigger than just the house site, you know? But the idea is that a lot of times subdivisions here are, you know, it's two-lot subdivision or a three-lot subdivision, and then the property owner is going to do the subdivision and then sell it, and then somebody else comes in and then, you know, they'll just do whatever. When it gets time to, you know, building a single-family home, there's, you have to meet the setbacks, but there's not a lot of other restrictions on land clearing and that kind of thing. So I think that building envelopes, if we're going with this environmental, what's the word, environmental resource area, I mean, it's important to show where these building envelopes within the parcel are going to be, so that you're not, you know, going to disturb any of those environmental areas as well.
Would that also include orientation of the building?
The building envelope wouldn't necessarily show the orientation, but there would be a requirement that the applicant show consideration of passive, passive solid gain. The more I think about that, the sort of visit, it is a habit. So if you look at most homes in Brattleboro, particularly in the, you know, traditional neighborhoods, homes face the street, regardless of whether the street allows for, you know, the front of the house to have southern exposure... the front of the house to have southern exposure or whatever, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, typically, you'd like to think of the front of the house being the living area and that living area being the area that's able to take advantage of passive solar gain, sun from, you know, because the sun is moving through the south of the sky. The problem with this is, is that many people end up in circumstances where they might have most of the day-to-day living space actually opening onto the backyard. And so, you might actually want solar gain along the side, one side of the house, or in fact, the back of the house. So, if you were to say, I get the bedrooms at the front of the house, they don't need solar gain. What I want is solar gain in the family room and the kitchen and something else, and that's all going to face the backyard because that's private, then you've got your answer. But it's sort of one of those things that, so it's, it's not as straightforward as it sounds because it depends on how you propose to design the layout of the house.
Yeah.
But the, what I'd say is that the developer or the applicant should be able to show that in each building envelope identified, the eventual builder of the home can take advantage of passive solar gain. Right?
Are you, do you guys have a problem with there being multiple building envelopes if there was a lot?
No, in fact, what I'm just doodling here is like a Venn diagram. And I think I've seen, sort of egg shaped, sorry, but that's intentional.
So, you don't forget your eggs.
Good point. So, I think I've seen from somewhere in Massachusetts, the establishment of like a Venn diagram. So, you could have more than one building envelope. They overlap, and you choose which one you're going to be in. And they, they can be drawn a little tighter, I guess, than a rectangle like this.
The person subdividing can choose or the prospective buyer can choose?
Trying to think through the implications of that. I think the developer needs to do it for reasons of being able to establish the relationship, say it's a cluster, the relationship between this building envelope and other building envelopes. On the other hand, I'd say if it was bigger parcels and more conventional, I could see an argument for saying that the homeowner gets to decide.
I see what you're saying with, when it's stuff that's close together. What I was thinking of is kind of a farmer who decides, I'm going to retire and put my house in the corner and sell the rest of my land.
Right.
And theoretically, you might have 10 places where you could build a house. And it would be, you know, I, I think the farmer Joe would want his buyer to be able to say, I want my house here, here.
So, you're talking about a minor subdivision, so he's just like cutting off one lot and...
Yeah, one, two, three, whatever. Yeah.
Thinking of minor, you might, you know, a minor might afford more flexibility. I don't know. I go, you know...
Something to think about.
Yeah, I haven't, I've been hopping from one foot to the other on that one.
It just seems a little restrictive when you get to a big lot with a lot of potential housing sites, especially because protective buyers of big lots these days are usually out-of-staters who want to do whatever they want. And granted, we usually don't...
But they're used to being somewhere where they can't do anything that they want.
I realize that, but, you know, you don't want to devalue a person's land if there are multiple envelopes that would be okay for the standards.
Yeah. I, you know, I think if you're going to pursue the environmental resource area protocol, it's better at the design stage to identify the designer subdivision phase. It's better to identify the building parcels than leave it to the eventual homeowner. I mean, we, you know, what I'd say there is, it's obviously going to be in relationship to the parcel size. So, if it's going to be a very sort of traditional subdivision and each of the parcels are going to be pretty big, then your building envelopes are also potentially going to be pretty big. And if you had this sort of overlapping model, you'd have to just have, you'd ask them to choose A or B, right? And, but they should, they should be in some way relating to the environmental attributes of the parcel and then development more generally. And I think that the tighter you get, tougher it gets. But there, it's useful again to think of the designer and the developer coming together and actually figuring out, you know, what kind of landscaping is required or how best to place the driveway and a whole bunch of those kinds of factors. That would mean that them determining the building envelope would be good.
If we do the, if it's more restrictive, then I think we should have something in here about grandfathering it. Because if you set a specified building envelope and then the setback requirements change, then you've inadvertently shot your...
Well, I think most of these are going to be cluster subdivisions of one kind or another. Yeah, but maybe not.
About that. I mean, I think the bigger question that comes out of that is, what if you don't want to, what if you want to build somewhere else? How do you go about modifying the building envelope and how can you?
How can you amend the building envelope and what criteria would you need to use to do that?
Oh, I got the impression that you guys didn't see that as an option that we should consider.
Oh, no, I think...
I think you could come in and ask for a reset of your building envelope. Say 10 years, say 10 years goes by, all right?
So, you're not thinking like a D restriction?
No.
No.
No, it just shows on the plat.
Right.
That gets filed.
Right. And then, and so then, when they come to give the zoning permit, they're going to have to show that the proposed building is within one, you know, is within the building envelope. I mean, you know, say you've got the two interlocking circles, you know, the sort of the Venn diagram guy going, I mean, then they at least get to choose A or B. I mean, I don't know.
Right, but that's not the person who's actually building and makes that choice.
No. I mean, I think that if the developer chooses, you know, identifies the building envelopes under the, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I just imagine if I wanted to build my own house, I would want to be making every decision because I figure you don't make that, you don't do that too many times in your life. And I imagine people are quite finicky about it. And I would be pissed off if I bought a piece of land and I were like, this is where you're building your house. Because I would want to walk the land and figure it out myself.
Yeah, I mean, funny kind of way, if you just think of sort of the conventional subdivision process, I mean, you get handed the dimensional standards and that's the end of it. You know, you don't go, oh, look, I just, I don't, I just can't live with that side yard setback. I mean, no one says that. They just go, okay.
I just don't like the person who's subdividing who really doesn't care about what happens to that land making a decision versus the person who's going to care about it, you know?
Well, I think, I think...
If I was getting rid of a piece of land, I'd just do a perfunctory, okay, there's the building envelope. It fits, it passes the requirements, you know, let me sell my land.
Yeah, I see what you're getting at. I guess I had imagined a somewhat concerned and engaged developer who would use the process from the environmental resource stuff.
I'm thinking small scale.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to, so even in a, even a farmer would address...
Nothing against farmers.
No, I didn't mean it like that. I mean, but it was your example of, you know, I'm done, I want to retire. You know, I've got my house here in the corner, three, I've got three lots that I'm willing to let go. I'm going to spend a whole afternoon going like this, one, two, three, I'm done. I can see somebody wanting to do that just because they're tired, they want to get it over and done with. But if you took it seriously and you worked through the environmental resource stuff and said, right, okay, he's, and on this parcel is a little rise, if this was clear, they'd get a view of this, so this is a good one for here. This one here, you know, I'd put it close to the brook or not.
Do people really do that?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, my, my only beef...
Have the developer done that?
Yeah, sure.
My beef with that is that I think that most big pieces of land that get sold are, or maybe not most, but a good proportion of them are people who have them. And for whatever reason, it's not sustainable for them to keep them. Because if I had a big piece of land, and I think people are, I don't think I'm the only one who feels this way, you'd have to pry it from me, hold that in hands to get it away from me. And I think a lot of people value their land very highly. And if they do have to make the decision to get rid of a parcel that is otherwise developable, they will have reached a point where they're saying, you know, this is terrible, I've got to sell it. And they try to do the minimum work that needs to be done in order to get that sold.
Right.
And I know there are also good developers who do what you're just saying. But I, a lot of people we see in front of DRB are not developers. They're, I want to split my lot and sell the other half.
Right. I mean, the other issue here that's a little bit more basic is around here. And I speak from personal experience, where can you put the septic? So, and or where are you going to have to go well, right? So, even if you just approached, I'm going to go from 10 acres to three, 3.3 acre parcels. On some level, to make, to make for an easy sale, one of the things that you would want to address there is, if I divide it up this way, do each one of these people get...
Perkable land?
Perkable land and some frontage so that they can have a driveway onto town-maintained road? Or, you know, I've got this, I've got this, I've got this, I've got this challenge to resolve. If I give everyone perkable land, two of them have to share a driveway because I can't give them all frontage on a town road and perkable land. It's just not going to work out. So, how am I going to draw these boundaries so that I get three sellable lots? Because, you know, it's that situation of, well, the last one in is going to get the one that sucks for the septic and you'll never sell it. So, you know, there's a way in which even if all you're trying to do is offload the damn thing so you can move on to the next phase of your life, you have to think about how easy they are, they're going to be to sell. And that's one of the features that you'd want.
Right. But I mean, I agree with you on this on small lots. It's the bigger lots, which I see as the more endangered by subdivision lots.
Right.
That I would be concerned about limiting one envelope. And also, those are where you'd have more potential envelopes.
Yes. Oh, so you're saying I'm subdividing this 60-acre parcel into a 20 and a 30 and living on the rest?
That's the only reason I use Farmer Joe, because I think of the land as you get out on the various dirt roads. And, yeah, that's where I think it would be a shame to limit to one building envelope.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, there, you could have 10.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know how to write language that says, unless Farmer Joe's giving you a really big chunk, in which case you don't need to worry about it, that's your problem later. Or apart from saying that.
Well, you could say that under a certain acreage, you should have, you should determine a sole building envelope. And then over that acreage, you know...
What if, I wonder, so in Section 3.8, Water Supply and Waste Water Disposal, there's a waiver, this is Page 17. It says, "In the event that the subdivider is proposing the creation of a lot or lots not requiring water or wastewater systems, the DRB may waive the provisions of these regulations pertaining to water and wastewater disposal, provided that the plan recorded with the town clerk clearly indicates that the intended use of the lots will not require water or wastewater disposal systems," and blah, blah, blah.
That's when they're hooked up to the town.
No, that's... Oh, wait, maybe you're right. Nope, nope, nope.
It doesn't quite say, it should say municipal water or wastewater.
Right. That's why I said it's worded the way they worded that. It's like, hmm.
Yeah, that's a bit rough.
Sorry, I was thinking of E. So, it's the state wastewater permit. So, basically, if you're not going to go get the wastewater permit, you have to file something that basically says that, I'm confused. I'm confusing myself.
Done a great job of confusing. So, wait, where's E? Oh.
Wastewater permit and waiver. It was usually, you could hook up to the town.
I mean, why not just waive the requirement that you have a single envelope if the lot created is going to be over, I don't know, seven acres or 10 acres or five acres or something? Would we just reference Act 250?
No, I was thinking of something different. I guess differently. So, I was thinking of a situation where if you're not, there's, I think it is D, the waiver. So, basically, if you're creating a lot, but you're not going to, you're not viewing it as...
Because C mentions about connecting to town or sewer.
Yeah. There's, there's a provision in the state wastewater and water supply regulations that basically allows you to put a note on the plan that basically says, haven't investigated it. It's not, you know, guaranteed to be buildable, that kind of thing. I wonder if there's some sort of out that you could do for a building envelope that basically...
Says the same thing?
Says, yeah, you know, a building envelope hasn't been determined and therefore, I don't know.
I mean, I was just thinking, if you're under a certain acreage, then you have to have one and designate it. If you're over, say, you have to designate one, but it's not binding the same way. Is that that hard to do? It's not binding on whoever takes that.
Yeah. I mean, so even in that, even in that instance...
That way, you could show that there's one.
Say you've got 18 acres and, you know, you put in a long driveway, like 900 feet, that allows you to take advantage of at least some soil where you think you can get a septic system installed and you can get a well. And for whatever reason, over time, you know, it takes you years to get around to building the home or whatever, and you decide actually you don't want to live there, you want to live closer to the road or somewhere else. The only thing I'd say is that the applicant for the, for that permit, for the home, needs to come back to the zoning administrator and show that where their alternate site is. I think the developer should be compelled to identify a building envelope. And then if you want to come back and say, no, I don't want that one. I've walked the land for three years and I've really decided that this spot here is much nicer, it's much better. Then you need to come back and reassure the zoning administrator that the impact of your alternate building envelope is no greater than their first one and that it doesn't conflict with any specifically identified natural asset or attribute that would prevent you from being there. In other, I mean, so when you're talking about a large, you know, like an 18-acre parcel, you're right. You could have, you could have 45 different building envelopes. When you think about 2,000 square foot footprint for a house, right? But some of those will be knocked out because actually, no, this is really close to this pre-identified, you know, path or, you know, or it's too close to the deer wintering yard or whatever it is, right? We don't want you there, but you can choose any one of these other 30. And you're like, oh, okay. But there has to be some process where the zoning administrator reviews it and goes, look, well before you bought this parcel, the developer established what the full set of environmental attributes were. And that's how your building envelope was determined. There are possible alternatives, but you need to demonstrate that the impact is no greater than the one that was identified the first time.
So, they have to go through the process again if I...
Just for theirs, yeah.
But just kind of administrative change. But I would just worry about that you've got a recorded plat, so just probably need to look at it.
Yeah, that's the one part that's problematic.
I mean, to make that work, wouldn't we also need to amend some other ordinance in connection with this?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so. I'm most concerned about Sue's concern too, which is you've got a recorded plat that shows the building envelope.
So, just need to pre-search it a little bit?
Yeah.
Come up with some proposals of how it could be handled?
Right.
But I think some sort of administrative sign-off on it would be okay. Just, it's the plat-recorded thing.
Okay. Well, I need to get back to work pretty soon.
I'm sorry.
Do we have any other major issues? I'm sorry.
Are you serious? You caught, yeah?
Well, I got my trial with our select board number tomorrow. And I have a memo due in the federal court before midnight, so, yeah.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Before midnight tonight? Wow.
Yeah, yeah. This E filing is really great.
Who's lined in the home front? The Chadies, the bambinos.
So, your little research assistants, yeah.
Unfortunately, this is not the kind of thing I can hand off. I can't blame my research assistants for this either.
So, no, there's nothing else.
Is there anything else we should discuss before we return? Because I kind of want to get this out of here.
No, but this is a work in progress. We'll definitely get you the next one a week before the meeting because we've got plenty of time.
We'll get email back and forth.
Yeah, if you've got comments as you go through it and, yeah, call, email.
But no group emails, or else we're freaking out.
This is a good protocol. We really do look forward to comments, even questions. There's, there's, you know, the old saying, there's no such thing as a stupid question, you know, just go ahead, ask anything you want.
Unless you copy all.
That makes it stupid, straight away. That qualifies as stupid. So, the easiest thing to do is just email me and Sue. And then, you know, what we can do then is even turn it around and turn it into some kind of document to distribute amongst everybody else, if it, if it's a good question or a good point, or, but, but let us control the traffic. Yeah, so, that's okay.
Start utilizing those emails.
I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, so moved, second. All the, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.